All right, we're all here. So at this point, we will go ahead and reconvene open session. And I don't think we had any actions taken in closed session for readout?
No, no actions were taken to readout.
So then we'll have the invocation led by trustee Jamal and the Pledge of Allegiance led by trustee Lang.
All right, well, as we near the start of a new decade, I wanted to take a moment here to reflect a bit on the past 10 years, which I think have been very good for our district. And let's look at some of the data. Over 75,000 students have been awarded associate degrees and certificates. More than 40,000 students transferred to four-year colleges and universities, including University of California and Cal State University Systems. Nearly 10 million in scholarships have been awarded to over 7,500 students. And more than 80,000 older adults have been served through our wonderful Emeritus Institutes Program of Lifelong Learning. Pretty impressive. With a new decade on the doorstep, we will be confronted with fresh challenges, including developing the right balance between distance and in-classroom learning, recruiting and retraining the best, retaining the best faculty, staff, and administrators, continuing to review and refresh our academic programs, and remaining a fiscally sound district, something where all of us are very proud of. And if you believe, as I do, the past decade is prologue for the next 10 years, we should feel very good about where we are going. Working together with a mission-driven purpose of providing world-class education, I really am confident, and I'm sure everyone shares this, or I hope you do, that better things, even better things are in store for this district over the next decade. Thank you.
Please join me as we salute the flag of this great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so where are we at here? Okay, so now we're at the annual organizational meeting. And I have a script here. So we're gonna adjourn the regular meeting and call to order the organizational meeting. So I need a motion and a second for each exhibit, each item on here. So the first is Exhibit A, Election of Officers. We can do these, probably best to do them one at a time instead of a slate. So we'll start with President. We'll entertain a motion and a second for President. Trustee Milchker.
I make a motion to nominate trustee TJ Pendergrass for President for next year.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
It's not allowing us to do it.
Oh, it's not doing the request to speak?
Oh.
Yeah. Or are you trying to do the motion up here? Yeah, because you have to do this spoken. Okay. So I have a motion from trustee Milchker, a second from trustee Lang. Is that a request to speak? Trustee Wright?
That's what I was gonna second.
Oh.
Everyone's trying to push it.
Everyone's, okay. Well, thank you. I will accept that nomination. So at this point, there's no discussion, we'll go ahead and vote on that item, if that's possible. Has somebody else put in motion and second?
Can we just raise our hands?
She's working on it.
Okay.
So during this interlude, as a history teacher, I have no, okay. I'll wait for the next one. All right, so that's a unanimous yes vote. Thank you very much. Next, we have Vice President. Yeah, this isn't cleared, so go ahead.
I'd like to nominate trustee Jamal.
Okay, a nomination.
I'd like to second that.
A trustee Jamal motion from trustee Whit Riddell and second from trustee Milchker for trustee Jamal as Vice President.
Thank you for that.
Okay. I didn't. No, I should have probably, huh? Oh, well. I should have abstained, I guess.
It's okay, you don't have to abstain.
All right. All right, so unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. All right, now we have Clerk.
I'd like to nominate trustee Wright to be Clerk.
Okay. Yeah, a second from trustee Lang and Jay. So we'll go ahead. Are you accepting that nomination, trustee Wright?
Yes.
All right, we'll go ahead and vote on that. We have an unanimous trustee yes, six trustee yes vote, one abstention, and a student advisory yes vote. All right, so with this, we have Exhibit B, Appointment of Secretary and Assistant Secretary. The current officers are, the chancellor is the secretary Kathleen Burke, and Assistant Secretary is Vice Chancellor of Business Services Anne Marie Gable, as is our common practice. So trustee Milchker.
I'd like to nominate Chancellor Burke to be our, what?
Secretary.
Secretary and Vice Chancellor Anne Marie Gable to be our secretary.
I second it.
And we have a second from trustee Jay.
I should have had that in front of me before I said that.
Yeah. We have the motion second thing on the screen, but, all right, here we go.
My screen isn't working that well.
Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next, we have Exhibit C, Appointment of Trustee Representatives. We'll do these one office at a time. First one is Representative to the Nominating Committee, to the Committee on School District Organization. Representative is trustee Wright, and the alternate is myself, trustee Pendergrass. Any objection?
Do you have a copy of that?
Okay, I have a motion for continuing with those two in those roles. Trustee Wright, you accept that nomination?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I'll accept the alternate unless somebody else wants it. Just, just jump right out.
It's perfect for you.
Being an alternate?
Yeah.
All right, okay, so we'll go ahead and vote on that item. Did you get the motion and second?
I seconded it.
Okay. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next, we have District Political Action Rep to Orange County School Board Association. Current representative is trustee Whit Riddell. Are you wishing to continue in that capacity?
I actually think TJ, you've really done, you've done, that's K through 12, right?
What is the, what is the role?
Why don't we have a copy of this?
Yeah, we can't see anything.
Yeah, this is.
It's on the agenda.
Okay, let me pull it up.
It's Exhibit C in the agenda.
Yeah, but.
Oh yeah, it doesn't have the names. It doesn't have the last, only I have that.
That's what I meant.
So you have to pay attention to me.
It's hard.
When I read.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so what is the role again?
It is District's Political Action Rep to Orange County School Board Association. I'm the, I am the representative of this board to that board.
Yes.
But this is different.
What does this role do?
I don't know, what did you do?
I went to the same meetings that you did, the.
The dinner meeting? But the dinner meetings are open to all of us.
Yes, and I went, I went several times, just twice.
So there's nothing specifically for political action?
It's mostly K through 12. That's what they're talking about.
Yeah, it's no role.
It's K through 12. One time, we were talking about transfer, and that was it, really.
It doesn't sound like it's anything different than going, being a regular, just an attendee at a CSBA meeting. I mean, OCS. OCSBA.
Personally, the speakers at the dinners were most, when I went, were phenomenal.
Right, but the dinners have nothing to do with the political, so if there's no political action role.
Why are we doing?
There wasn't.
Then why do we have this spot?
I have no, that's why I was asking you, I don't, it didn't seem like we needed. Unless we're required to do it.
Let me see, anybody call you to ask you where I was? Okay.
I mean, it looks like we didn't do anything with respect to it last year, so if we don't.
We'll just keep tearing it.
Don't they usually have, because I didn't go this year, but don't they usually have the political action meetings prior to the regular dinner meetings at the OCSBA dinner meeting? I think four times a year, I think it is.
Not anymore, now they do, they have ETC and they have.
I haven't gone this year, okay.
Trustee Whit Riddell. Just let her do nothing again.
Sure.
All right, all right, we have a motion from trustee Lang.
I second it.
A second from trustee Jay.
All right.
We'll just keep it and find out what it is someday, and then he'll have something to do.
Long way to drive.
All right. I think it is worth note, apparently we're able to belong to CSBA. I always thought it was a K through 12, but apparently they have a community college segment now.
I did know that, that's interesting.
So might want to look at that.
I thought the OCSBA was unique in that, having the community colleges with the K-12.
Yeah.
Interesting.
All right, so we're voting.
Oh.
There we go. We have trust, six trustee yes votes, one abstention, and a student advisory yes vote. Okay, and then we have Representative to the Orange County Legislative Task Force, Representative trustee Milchker, alternate trustee Lang.
I nominate Marcia Milchker.
Okay, thank you, I'll take it. I like, I like doing that, I enjoy it. I was one of the founders of that organization, so, you know.
And trustee Lang is the alternate, or are we doing a separate alternate?
I already seconded it, but if you want to second it, that's fine.
Are we going with the same two, or are you just doing the?
The same two.
Going with the same two.
Okay, so trustee Milchker and trustee Lang.
Okay.
All right.
Do I abstain? I'll abstain.
Please vote on the item. There we go. Six trustee yes votes, one abstention, and a student advisory yes vote. Representatives to the SOCCCD Audit Committee, Chair trustee Lang, Representative number one, trustee Wright, Representative number two, myself, trustee Pendergast.
I wouldn't mind doing it since I went to the meeting the other day, I thought it was very, very informative.
I'm out.
So I'd like to.
What does that mean?
We can do this as a slate, we can do it, right?
Yes.
So I'd like to nominate trustee Lang to be the chair again.
Yes, he was phenomenal.
And then add trustee Whit Riddell and, who's in it?
Trustee Wright.
And trustee Wright, that's the three to serve.
I second, I second that.
You guys are okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
The people nominated? All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Go pass them.
That's what I thought it was gonna be.
We have four yes votes, three abstentions, it's still a quorum, and a student advisory yes vote.
I was thinking the math through that vote beforehand.
All right. Next, we have Representative to the Saddleback College Foundation and Representative to the Irvine Valley College Foundation. Currently, Saddleback College Foundation rep is trustee Whit Riddell, and Irvine Valley College Foundation rep is trustee Jay.
Second.
Discussion?
Did you want, well, if you're not wanting to accept the nomination, you don't have to.
I really think that someone else could do the job too. I mean, this is very intensive. Not that I, shouldn't have said that if I want somebody else to take it.
Yeah, right.
So the political action stuff takes too much of your time, so.
I mean, I love the group, it's phenomenal. It is. But I think it would be wise and healthy for someone else to do it.
Is anybody else interested in doing that?
I'm already IVC.
And you're wanting to continue in that role?
Yes.
Okay.
I see that smile on your face, trustee.
You really sold it with how intense it was, so I think, I think you're nominated.
All right. Be glad to.
Okay. With that, go ahead and vote on the item. Six trustee yes, one abstention, and a student advisory yes vote. Last, in Exhibit C, we have Representatives to the Board Policy Subcommittee. Currently, we have Chair trustee Jamal, Representative number one, trustee Whit Riddell, Representative number two, trustee Jay. Do I have a motion to?
I nominate the same people to be.
All right, we have a motion to continue that.
On the, thank you.
Do the nominees accept that nomination?
Yes.
Yes, but are there, are there desires from other trustees to serve on this?
No.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Go ahead and vote on the item. Nope. We have five yes votes, two abstentions, and one student trustee vote, yes vote. All right, so that's it with Exhibit C. Exhibit D is the 2020 Board Calendar Meeting, which is now my opportunity to mention that is not the start of the next decade, 2021 is the start of the next decade, but we'll go with it. History, sorry. It's beautifully written nonetheless.
I, I, I still consider it the next decade.
All right, so I have a motion from trustee Milchker, a second from trustee Lang to accept the 2020 Board Calendar. Seeing no request to speak, we'll vote on the item. Did you need to make a change?
Yes, I wanted to say something.
Okay.
This is our, our regular meeting calendar, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, everyone. For July. Grace made a comment that we were going to vote on a couple of days in the summer. We were going to discuss. Yes, no?
We had emails and opportunities to reply to emails.
But I thought we were going to decide here.
Well, this is where we vote on the calendar, but the opportunity to provide feedback was through the email.
All right. Can I just ask?
But I mean, it doesn't mean you still can't.
Okay, can I ask in July?
Clear the vote.
Clear the vote. In July, are we for certain going to meet on the 27th?
No.
It is the 20th, okay, I didn't change my, thank you very much, that's what I wanted. And then in August.
Monday, July 20th. It's on like.
The 27th, because.
It's on the calendar.
It's July 20th.
Ah, man, it was the 27th, because I have JOs on the 20th.
What?
It's in the, in the.
I, I get that now, but I could have swore the draft I saw had the 27th. Obviously, the same draft that trustee Whit Riddell had.
I had the 20th too.
Okay, well, I guess we'll do it on the 20th, and I won't be there.
What date are we talking about?
July.
That's when our meeting's scheduled, right? The 20th, yeah.
Tell me the positive date, the confirmed date for August.
31st.
31st.
Yes.
Okay.
Problem is, I don't erase.
Are we good?
One more. Yes, okay. And June is the 22nd, correct?
Yes, correct.
All righty, love you guys.
So, ready to vote?
You okay?
Okay. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. So that calendar is adopted. We'll get 12 calendar invites in the next day or two. Next, we have Board Agenda Planning Calendar, which is typically just a shift from the meeting calendar for when they plan them. Is it a week before? The planning calendar, is it just like a week before the date?
Yeah, these are the different, these are the different reports and so forth. We target these months to, to make these kinds of presentations and do these reports.
Got it, okay.
So this is the day of.
Got it, all right. We have a motion from trustee Milchker, second from trustee Jamal. Seeing no request to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next, we have Agenda Format, Exhibit F. We have a motion from trustee Lang, a second from trustee Wright. Seeing no request to speak, we'll vote on the item.
There's no attachments.
No.
So I guess part of what we're realizing, there's no attachments on the electronic version for the exhibits. So the calendar wasn't there. They're under which one? Just 2.4 heading? Oh, there it is, Exhibit A throughout, there we go. Yeah, and the printed one, but we do two, it's just in, it's not segmented out, okay. So then that adjourns the organizational meeting. Please note, only if new officer has been selected, we need to recess, so since we're all in the same spots, we don't need to do that.
This did.
And then, so that's, we're on to the next thing. Or do you want me to do the other thing first?
So before we move on, on behalf of the Board and a grateful district, we would like to thank trustee Pendergast for his year of service as the President of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I would also like to take this opportunity to present trustee Wright with a 25-year service pin.
Whoa.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so from there, we now have public comments. I see no requests to speak, we'll go ahead then, go to Board Reports, and we'll go ahead and start with trustee Lang.
All right, I wanted to, as part of my report, acknowledge two long-term employees who have either retired from positions or from our district this year. The first person that I'd like to thank is Glenn Rockmore for his many years of dedicated service and leadership as President of Irvine Valley College. I've probably never received more correspondence and accolades from the many folks in the business industry and nonprofit leaders whose lives and organizations Glenn touched over as many years in leading the college. I also wanted to thank Brandy Delena, who I saw on tonight's agenda, is retiring after her, what I think were outstanding years of service as Executive Director of Facilities, Planning, Administration, and Business Services. Brandy, I think, had a very difficult, perhaps one of the most difficult jobs in this district, which she handled well, in my opinion. Large, long-term construction projects always seem to take longer and cost more than anyone would like, and are fraught with innumerable ways that such projects can go sideways. Thank you, Brandy, for what I think was a job well done. And then finally, to all my fellow trustees and to everyone at the colleges and within our district, my wishes for a very happy holidays and good health and cheer throughout the new year. Thank you.
All right, trustee Jay.
On December the 2nd, I attended the Saddleback College Nursing Program Penning Ceremony. We had a total of 48 students graduated. There were 38 women and 10 men. The nursing awards were given out. The Spirit of Nursing went to Ron Almenaral, and the Leadership in Nursing Award went to Noham Paja. The faculty reflected on the last four semesters for these students and voted for the top nominees. Congratulations to these nursing students that have graduated. The student William Lahat gave a modern version of the Parable of the Good Samaritan. Love thy neighbor, who is thy neighbor? The reading was excellent and brought tears to many eyes. I was so pleased to see my good friend Sabrina Solaby graduate and Donnell Loman, who received the William J. Memorial Scholarship, and graduated. It was a fantastic evening for all. On December the 6th Friday, I attended the EOP Care Cal Works Guardian Scholars at the Annual Adopt a Family Program at IVC. This was a wonderful lunch served, pictures with Santa, and opportunity drawings for the students. On December the 10th, I attended the IVC Foundation Board Governors Meeting at the IVC President Conference Room. First, we had fundraising challenge from Lisa Greenberg, the President of the Board of Governors, who is doing an exceptional job in the presidency of the Board of Governors. We had an update on Title V. Lisa Oransky and Lisa Greenberg have been working very hard on this issue. Proposed changes to implementing regulations have been making their way through the California Community College Governing Boards. One very exciting piece of business is that the Board approved to accept gifts of virtual cyber cryptocurrency. Lisa Oransky provided an update on the IVC Foundation Awards Dinner Saturday, March 14th, the 20, March 14th, 2020, at Fettla Venue. A college presentation was given on the Disabled Students Program Services, was given, and the program handles about 1,000 disabled students. On Saturday, I attended the Saddleback College Holiday Big Band Concert, and featuring the jazz arrangement and holiday favorites. Joey Sellers, again, did a fantastic show and had a special, wonderful female vocalist, Grace Lynn Hendrick, in the show. And December, the, excuse me, the one, on Sunday, December the 8th, I attended the College President's Circle Holidays Social, the 35th Annual Feast, A Feast of Lights Presented by Saddleback Choirs and Symphony Orchestra. The performance was the best ever. I did not want the music to end. Every member was, every number was outstanding. It was the greatest way ever to start the holiday season, thanks to Scott Farling and everyone who participated for that great evening. I was sorry that the announcement that Kathy Tibbetts would be retiring. She has done a wonderful and outstanding work at Saddleback College. Uh, she has done a wonderful and outstanding work at Saddleback College. The evening was a celebration of beauty, joy, love conveyed through music. The spirit was wonderful. You could, you could tell that Scott Farling, the interim dean of Fine Arts, was, was very, very well liked and doing a great job for the Fine Arts Division.
Okay.
Try to be festive.
Uh, I have, uh, as I mentioned, uh, the Orange County School Board Association Meeting that I attended on November twentieth, um, there was a discussion again about the, uh, mental health funds that the Orange County, uh, supervisors have, the, that, uh, the K through twelve districts are putting together a motion to get that money, and they're doing resolutions. Um, I think I had mentioned before that, that they had asked that we would join in on that resolution, and I think some people expressed that maybe instead we would do a resolution to, uh, support their efforts, but not necessarily go after the money ourselves. So, uh, we can talk about that at a later date, but just wanted to throw that out there as, was part of the discussion. It was also then brought up that the, they were asking if we were going to the California School Board Association Conference, uh, this month, uh, at which point I didn't know that we were allowed to, because we're not members. I know we could be members, but they made it very clear that there's a, they have sessions for community college trustees, so it might be something we want to look at, uh, joining as well.
That's new.
So, and then, on December second, I also attended the nurses' penning. It was wonderful as always. Again, amazing, forty-eight graduates is, is really impressive. And I, I know I'm not the only trustee that whenever you wind up in a hospital, you ask them where they went to nursing school, and if they don't say Saddleback, you get nervous. Uh, attended the Saddleback Holiday, uh, Get Together on December eleventh, that was very nice, thank you for ha- hosting that. Um, I didn't stay to see if Jim Wright won a prize like he does every year, but I, I, I imagine if he did, I would have heard about it. Uh, that's all I have. Trustee Jamal.
Alright, thank you. And, uh, Mr. Smarty Pants, the, the beginning of the decade is not so clear-cut, so I suggest as a student of history
It is if you know how to read a calendar. There's no year zero.
No, no.
Starts at one.
Spend some time doing some research, instead of a gut check, you may find out there is a variance of opinion on when the, when the decade starts, so. Yeah, nanany poo-poo to you too. So I I did, uh, attend a lot of things, won't go over everything. The Orange County Business Council Red Tape to Red Carpet event, which recognizes public agencies that are making wise use of taxpayer money. We had two nominees from Saddleback and IVC. Um, also attended another Orange County Business Council, uh, holiday gathering of, uh, community leaders, elected officials, chancellor Burke was there, trustee Uriarte was there, that was last week. The IVC Holiday Party was awesome, especially our cornhole-winning team. Um, despite the acting president's attempts to tamper with the results and add an additional round, we prevailed. So that was a, that was part of the highlight of the IVC Holiday Party. Nursing penning ceremony was, was fantastic, and I agree, trustee Jay, William Lahat, you know, I still remember what he said, and I mean, I think it was simple, uh, in addition to what you said, what he said is, we all know what integrity is when we see it. And I thought, oh, that's, that's pretty poetic. Simple, yet very prescient in these, in these times. And then lastly, uh, and I bring this up because it's an issue that has come up before our board here, last week there was a rare occurrence in the United States Senate. Uh, there was a unanimous vote on an issue, and how, in, in this day and age, how often do you see one hundred senators vote in favor of something? And it happened last week when the United States Senate, uh, approved the Armenian genocide resolution, uh, to condemn, uh, the one point five million Armenians murdered in the, at the, uh, hands of the Ottoman Turkish Empire. And, um, you know, it's a hundred and four years, obviously it took a long time to get to this point, and there are reasons for that, but I want to thank this district, uh, small part for, for this board unanimously voting for designating April twenty-fourth as, uh, Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day. And, you know, I'm a, I'm a descendant of genocide survivors. Um, I just, I, I know I'm going long, but I actually just discovered two weeks ago the, the manifest of my grandmother and her two daughters, uh, who made the trek, um, from Kaisery, which was historically Armenian, to Constantinople in nineteen twenty-three, and I have the, the ship manifest, and they ended up in Ellis Island, where many immigrants ended up in nineteen twenty-three, and then eventually ended up in Detroit. Um, her other eight brothers and sisters were murdered by the Turks. Um, and, uh, we were able to document some of that through oral history over the years, so I, you know, I appreciate what the district did, and it's really amazing what happened in the, in the Senate last week. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Wright.
From our last, uh, board meeting on, on November the eighteenth, I attended the following six events. On November the twenty-first and the twenty-third, I was pleased to attend the Community College League of California, CCLC, Annual Convention in Riverside, California. I joined over six hundred people at the convention. I was pleased to see several of our administrators, faculty and staff from both of our colleges attending also. I just wanted to mention, uh, three of the, three of the, uh, uh, seven, uh, sessions that I attended. One was, uh, how, how do trustees and CEOs create, nurture and sustain a campus culture of diversity, equity and inclusion? A real task. Then finally, I, I also attended the AB seven oh five that took, uh, Chris, uh, Citrus College Practices in Effectiveness for English and Math Classes. It was very well done. And finally, a, there was a, uh, session on, uh, a real conver- uh, a real conservation on homelessness in higher education. And we were told that it's, there might be, it might be as high as one of every five students is homeless. I did attend the Nurses' Penning Ceremony, it was a wonderful event. I also attended the Winter Masquerade Employee End of, End of the Year Celebration at IVC. I also attended the President Circle Holiday Social on, uh, Sunday, December the eighth, a Feast of Lights, wonderful event. I attended also the, uh, Saddleback College President's Holiday Open House. And finally, on Thursday, December the twelfth, I attended the CSEA Chapter Meeting Holiday Party, a wonderful event.
Trustee Milchker.
Okay, um, I too, like so many of the board, and it's really incredible that so many board members attend the Nurse Penning Ceremony, and they mentioned that the, that our nursing program is number two in the nation, and I'm so proud that so many of our nursing students are in all our local hospitals, taking care of all our constituents and of all of us. They're, they're doing a fabulous job. We all want Saddleback College nurses to take care of us. Um, Karen Brower, the video journalism professor at Saddleback College invited me to attend a videotaping of the Saddleback College Channel Thirty-nine, Orange County Now. Uh, these students participated in every aspect of this production. They write, produce, uh, they're the news anchors, they operate the video cameras, and they conduct their own interviews on location all over South Orange County. And most of all, most of these students weren't even students of, of journalism prior to this. I sent the link of this production to all the board members and the chancellor and the college president, and they even have their own YouTube channel to watch all the local news of, of, that the Saddleback College students, um, produce, so enjoy it, I hope. Um, I attended the IVC Employee Holiday Party, uh, IVC Radio Gals, incredible talent i- in our colleges, it was a funny and fun play, and it could be on Broadway. The, of course, the Saddleback Feast of Lights, that is a Saddleback Holiday tradition, it's always incredible, it's the pride and joy of assist- interim dean Scott Farthing, and all of the performances were sold out with long waiting lists, and people just waiting in line trying to get in, um, just in the slim, slim chance that they might get in to see the performance. Um, Saddleback College Inspector Carol, which is funny, and, and, um, also the students were fabulous. I was also proud to participate in our district's Adopt a Family Program, and Jim Gaston has been heading up this program for fifteen years, and there are so many compassionate people like Jim in our district to help people in, in, that, that are in need at this time of the year. I want to congratulate our, um, District Manager of the Year, uh, Priya Jerome and Herb Richter, the two managers of the year, congratulations, and I'm glad you're here. And, um, also congratulate IVC Women's Volleyball, that came in number two in the state, which is, which is fabulous. Um, and the IVC man- men's basketball team that won the championship game, and also in President Stern's President Report, he talked about how a, a delegation of Chinese educators came to visit Saddleback College, to visit our vocational programs, and they would like to have, um, a, a, an actual, um, they'd like to have a proposed sister city program for two of their schools in China, which I think is very exciting for our international students and our professors. And also, um, we received information that there are a myriad of student health center resources for Saddleback College students during finals this week, and I hope they all take advantage of it, and happy holidays to one and all. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. For the sake of time, I will be very, very short, so first of all, I'd like to wish all of you a wonderful Christmas, a wonderful holiday, um, Hanukkah, um, just have a wonderful time with family and friends, and put work aside. I'm gonna do it, so, um, it's hard for us to do, I know this campus is phenomenal, and we do find our work sacred, and we do find our students, um, profit from that. I want to thank everyone who's worked so hard, and I can't go ahead and name but the people at this table here. I'd like to say thank you because all of you have worked very hard throughout the year. The people at this table here, um, I'd like to say it's been a pleasure working with you this past semester, and, um, your Christmas presents will be in the mail. Um, I just want to wish everyone a wonderful holiday. So for the sake of time, good evening.
Good, alright. Okay. Student trustee Uriarte.
Good evening, everyone. Um, on Wednesday, November twenty-seven, I was honored with invitation to a, a TV interview at a local Laguna Wood Station. During this event, I have the opportunity to encourage the general public to enroll at the college, uh, classes and courses, whether as a new student, re-entry, or as a part of the Emeritus In- Emeritus Institute, and to proudly show off also the constant progress of our, our Community College District elected trustee, administrators, faculty members, and all members that keep educating our community to reach new heights. On Saturday, December eighth, I had the pleasure to attend a welcoming event at the McKinney Theater, uh, called the President Circle Holiday Social. During these events, our college president, Dr. Stern, gave us a wonderful message. We are loved and encouraged to show our gratitude and appreciation as part of our nature, our humanity. Thank you, Dr. Stern, uh, for the meaningful words. This event was followed by the performance of the Feast of Lights, where I have the time to delight my senses with the voices of talented students, professors and members of our community. On Friday, December twelve, I had the opportunity to attend with chancellor, uh, Kathleen Burke and trustee Timothy Jamal, the Orange County Business Council, uh, Holiday Reception in the city of Irvine. During this event, I had the opportunity to network and share valuable information about the Saliva College and Irvine Valley College Foundations, encouraging many local business owners and representatives to support the dreams of our local students by contributing to scholarship funds. Also, many property manager representatives, journalists, were interested in our ATEP Center, many of them there were unaware of the high-paying and in-demand technical careers offered at our testing location. Well, now they know. And I would like to thank the Community College District students for their perseverance, uh, these, uh, fall two thousand nineteen semesters, to complete their, uh, classes and courses satisfactorily. Also, many thanks to our faculty members for being kind and understanding by accommodating unique needs of students, especially during stressful times of the final exams. I would like to congratulate the Disabled Students Program and Services Department for both colleges for constantly sending, sending friendly reminders to all the students about the services available. On Friday, December thirteen, I met, uh, Mr. Ali Dory, who is the lab technician for the Journalists and Media Department, who was proactively promoting journalists' classes for this upcoming spring two thousand twenty semester at Saliva College Campus. I would like to encourage the students to attend, uh, the McKinney Theater Performance and Irvine Valley College, uh, performances, uh, and participate in classes such as journalists, um, which give the students the opportunity to find their voice and speak respectfully about subjects of interest and publish their interview, interviews at the Lariat, our Salva College publication. Also, uh, music, dance theater, art, culture, English, history, geography. Well, I encourage the students to take all the classes to just find their path, their hobbies or their likes. Uh, we are never learned to, learn, we're never learned, late to learn. Many thanks for your attention and happy holidays and prosperous, prosperous new year. Thanks.
Chancellors report.
Thank you. Uh, you've heard a lot of the events that I attended, particularly those in the district, but because of this board's focus on diversity, equity and inclusion, as Dr. Wright mentioned, I'd like to focus on one event that I attended. On Saturday, December seventh, I had the pleasure of attending the inaugural Community College Faculty Job Summit, hosted by our district in collaboration with the other three Orange County Community College districts and three nearby Los Angeles County districts. The day-long summit included engaging hiring workshops, mock interviews, resume reviews, and opportunities to take professional headshots and meet with faculty from various disciplines. We had a couple of faculty who spent the day there talking to recruits. The event was held at, in Anaheim at the Majestic Hotel. The parking was crazy, and it was raining that day, uh, because it drew almost four hundred people throughout the day. So with the focus on diversity and inclusion, the summit proved to be a collaborative success to increase the diversity of faculty pools. The credit for this really goes to our human resources team, uh, led by the vice chancellors in coordination with the chancellors who supported them in doing this. I thank them all for their many hours of participation to help plan and organize the event, as well as the probably eight to ten hours they spent in the hotel on a Saturday, all for the benefit of the district and its future diversity. So thank you all, and happy holidays.
Okay. College presidents report.
Good evening and happy holidays, all. Uh, I want to take a moment to introduce, albeit a little bit belatedly, but this is the first opportunity we've had, uh, introduce our new Director of Strategic Enrollment Management, uh, Nicola Perry. Nick, if you don't mind standing up. Uh, Nick is, uh, fulfilling a, a two-year, uh, appointment to, uh, a categorically funded position that we created, uh, to coordinate and oversee our strategic enrollment management work at the college. Uh, Nick comes to us after serving as a consultant for several years, doing exactly this kind of work, guided pathways, strategic enrollment management, equity work and student success initiatives at several colleges, including Cypress. Uh, she also has been employed at the Coast District, Glendale Community College in Arizona, and within the large Americopa district. Uh, Nick has her bachelor's, master's, as well as an ed services degree in higher ed leadership from ASU, so she speaks a lot of Arizona State. Thank you and welcome, Nick. I wanted to give you a very brief progress report on our naming committee. This was a, a task force that we put together to address the need, uh, as you and others have called for, uh, to look for naming partnerships for our stadium and other potential new buildings. When I last talked to you about this, about five or six months ago, we had put together an actual committee. Uh, that committee is, uh, led by our executive director of the foundation, Liz McCann, and has stakeholders on it from throughout the campus, representing, uh, industry partnerships, uh, the foundation, uh, and lots of other opportunities for us. Uh, they've been meeting once a month, they put together, uh, a very detailed spreadsheet of potential prospects that they are cultivating, uh, with go-to information and strategies for approaching them. Uh, they are, at this point, working on a final prospectus, a professional prospectus, that'll be ready in about five or six weeks, uh, and then actual meetings will take place, uh, trying to identify a potential naming partner for the stadium and other buildings. Uh, we already are in more advanced discussions, uh, for pieces of the stadium, uh, for which we could find naming partners, uh, anywhere from twenty-five thousand to five hundred thousand. Again, emphasizing pieces of the stadium, not the whole stadium. Again, emphasizing pieces of the stadium, not the whole stadium. And then lastly, I just wanted to report to you that we are currently at work, as we need to be, putting together our third Promise Cohort, which will begin fall 2020. We currently have 1,375 students registered for the Consoling 100 class that is the prerequisite to qualifying for becoming a Promise student. So we feel we're on our way to our third cohort, which will be 1,000 students. We started at 250, then scaled to 500, and now we're moving on to 1,000 students. We're also looking at a pilot of about 200 students who would not be recent high school graduates as being part of a prospective pilot and promise to look at that demographic, which is very important to us at Saddleback. That's it. Happy holidays to everybody.
Real quick, trustee Jamal has a...
So on the issue of naming rights, please don't hesitate to contact the board if you think we can be helpful in outreach to those in the community who might consider naming, providing their name in exchange for a donation to the foundation. So don't hesitate to contact us if we can be helpful.
We will not hesitate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to say, I just found out my nephew is part of that Promise cohort this year. So that's very amazing that that's working as well as it is.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Good evening. A couple of updates from Irvine Valley College. First, I want to congratulate the women's volleyball team, 27-1, a very remarkable season, second in the state. And Coach Pestalaci and those women did an amazing job this year. Also, our men's basketball team is 10-1, and our women's basketball team is 11-1. So I look forward to playing Saddleback College this year.
Are we continuing the president's cup? Or are we...
Yes, we will need a president's cup.
Is that tradition carrying forward?
Yeah. And as trustee Jay said, the IVC Foundation changes bylaws. We are willing, ready, and able to accept your cryptocurrency. So please send it our way. Next, we have, I want to thank the Irvine Valley College family for providing, the Academic Senate, the Classified Senate, and all members of the IVC community put together and provided us feedback for the job description for the presidential search. And all that information is coming before you tonight, so I want to thank IVC for coming together for that. And finally, on a somber note, and I apologize, trustee Burke, I just found this out. There has been a missing hiker on Mount Baldy since December 8, the hiker from Irvine. His name is Sri Makapati. His son is a student at IVC, and we are currently offering all the support and resources we can to our student during this difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll get invitations for the dates of those two games? Yeah, okay. All right. I have to make, yeah, I'm assuming it's finals week? The student representative's not here? All right, so we'll move on to board request for report. We have one from trustee Whit Riddell.
Yes. If you look, I wanted to ask that we, I'm asking the board to have more discussion about ATEP and to discuss the direction of the focus of the education that will be presented at ATEP in the next two, four, and six years. And therefore, I'd just like to hold the signature contract until we do this. I understand that we did the contract last, we voted, it was 6.4 item, and we voted to go ahead with the signage. And I'm not asking to stop it, per se, but I'm asking to hold on. And I believe that the report was submitted to you, TJ?
Yes.
Yes. So I would like to have that report reviewed, the responsibilities that we have. And I'm just asking the board if they want to do this, because I have really felt compelled that we need to know more about ATEP and its future. We talk about ATEP today, but what is the future that we're going to do? I see a couple of the programs coming down into ATEP, but I really want us to discuss in more detail about the future of this park and what we're naming this park.
Okay. So you have a board request report. So if you're asking the board if we want to do that, this is where that happens, because we vote on that. So I would need a motion and a second to approve the request for a report. I have a motion from trustee Jamal, second from trustee Jay. Does anybody have any questions or comments on...
So we're voting to approve the report?
You're voting to approve the request for the report?
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Okay, sure.
All right, trustee Jamal.
I just want to thank trustee Whit for requesting this report. I think these, all the issues that she's identified are extremely important to this district. And obviously, ATEP is something that's been challenging for the district to fulfill the mission and mandate. And I think we're absolutely committed to do that, but I think this report is well put together. Thank you.
If I can add, I think, based on the discussion we had earlier in closed session, this might possibly, do we have an idea of timeline of how long this report would take? Okay. So when we know that, we can, I can, okay. There we go. You still have a question?
Really, I mean, your question or comment really speaks to what I had to say about this, too. I think it obviously is important that we get all this information, but I'm wondering if a report at a board meeting is the right place, or whether that should be a separate retreat.
That's exactly what I was going with, special session that we had mentioned earlier.
Yeah.
I was going to ask for clarification of that.
Yeah, I think, I think, does that make sense?
And frankly, that would be my preference, because I think it will take more than just a discussion at a board meeting to properly address the items that you've identified here, and more.
Right, yeah. So I think, I think we're all in agreement, then we would want this report at a special session. So when it's, when we get the timeline on when they, how long they think it'll take to get the information, then we'll have an idea of when we would set up that session.
Thank you, trustee Lang.
Okay. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next, for no discussion items, so we'll move to the consent calendar. Get my little paper here and be ready for polls. Trustee Jamal.
5.15.
5.15.
I'd like to, 5.4 and 5.6.
5.4 and 5.6. Okay. Trustee Whit Riddell. 5.1?
Yes. I would like to ask, and I prefaced it when I submitted my report, is that I'm asking if we can hold in...
Wait, just say you're pulling 5.1.
5.1.
Thank you. Any other polls? Yeah. 5.3. Okay. Any others? All right, I'll entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar. I have a motion from trustee Jamal, a second from trustee Wright. I assume those requests to speak were earlier, so we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. So we'll start with 5.1, trustee Whit Riddell. Since these are the minutes...
Yes, they're the minutes from, from our last session. And I'm just asking to put a hold on six...
You have to ask for a motion to reconsider an item?
A motion, to reconsider. There you go. I've never done this before. To reconsider 6.4 from last meeting, as we voted for the contract to go through to the signage company, and it was a six-to-one vote. And I'm just asking to put a hold on that until we review the ATEP.
Okay. So you have a motion to reconsider. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Maker the motion like to speak as to why we should pass this motion to reconsider.
I'm actually concerned that you can't do this, because it would have to be, I mean, you can amend the minutes and so forth, but to pull something out of the minutes that's been approved, that hasn't been noticed for reconsideration to the public, I don't think is possible.
You can, you can move to reconsider it to then be revoted at a later meeting. You just can't, you just can't act on it.
I'm not asking to negate that. I'm just asking to hold it.
It doesn't mean the vote would go differently, per se. It's just, it's a way to hold the item from being, from moving forward.
So you're asking us not to move forward with that particular item until it comes back to you in January?
Correct.
For reconsideration?
If, if this motion passes.
If this motion pass, motion passes, are there any implications in terms of the contract or where we are?
So the contractor has already been notified that the board has awarded the contract to them. We are in the process of receiving their certificates of insurance. I would need to review the contract language on suspension and/or termination for that. I'm sure if we do this, we could be charged for delays and for the costs that they've incurred, since we've already notified them that the board voted and we have awarded the contract to them. I would have to look into, I don't know, I don't have the contract language memorized to see what that may cost us.
I'm not asking to terminate the...
Right, but we also want to make sure that you understand that it doesn't come without a potential cost.
Typically, anytime you award a construction contract and you notify the contractor that you're going to award it, you have a timeline that you're holding them to. And so if you then put a stop to it, any costs that they have incurred up to this point for making sure that they have staff that's going to work on it, if they have sent anything out, you know, with the signage project, it's a fabrication package, and so they would be sending that out to have the signs fabricated. So if there have been any costs incurred, you know...
We still need signage out there. I'm not saying negate that opportunity. I'm not. I'm just saying ask them to hold.
I guess the question then is why? Why are we, why, why do you want to hold? And maybe that can be answered without a motion to reconsider.
Because I'm thinking that it's a possibility, after we sit and review the future of ATEP, we want to be certain that what we're contracting is something that we think is appropriate.
In regards to the name?
Yes.
So you're concerned that we would spend, what was it, $2 million?
Yeah.
To call it, all right, to call it ATEP and it's not ATEP?
Well, I hope not, but I want to make certain that we believe that.
Is that something that can be just in the contract, that the design in, in concept could, like, instead of ATEP as the four letters, be ESEF or something, whatever, you know what I mean? Like, how difficult would that be?
Well, it'd be changing the design. So the design has been fully vetted and approved by DSA. If it's going from four letters, A-T-E-P, to a different four letters, that would probably be something that we could do relatively easy without a change order, as long as it was still the same size and width and, you know, everything else. If it's completely changing it from four letters to five letters, you know, I could see that that could potentially create a change order and a change in the design. I don't know what it would do to the footprint, whether or not we would require additional DSA approval on that change.
I'm not trying to make life hard for this vendor, not at all, or for the district, but I have this responsibility to the community and the money that we use from our taxpayers. And I have lost a lot of sleep over this. I really have. And I have a passion on this now. If I'm wrong, I'll eat crow. If I'm wrong, we move on. And I don't want to be wrong. And I want all of us to agree on the future of ATEP. And right now, making a sign, calling it something, and spending $1.9 million, I know we're going to have to spend something, but to me, $1.9 million is a lot of money. And there's more. I mean, there's going to be another $2 million, so we're talking about $4 million.
The name of ATEP, is there any issues, like, at the state level or the community college chancellor's office or anything, if we were to change that name? Is it a recognized campus? I know it's not a campus, per se, because of the whole thing we went through with accreditation, but...
Nothing at the state level or with the chancellor's office. However, it is in our development agreement with the city of Tustin. So, you know, it's all over the development agreement, that it's the Advanced Technology Education Park. I would have to see what we would have to do if we changed the name, how that could affect our development agreement. And I, our attorney just left.
He's left, yeah, just a few minutes.
I have, I, I'm not, I don't have a thing about the name. Actually, I love the name. I loved the name from the very beginning. I just want it to be representative for what we are doing out there.
Let me ask a question. So in the, I'm trying to pull, I pulled up the agreement. I'm trying to read it.
There's, there's a trustee Lang.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I'm going to go on record as opposing trustee Whit's motion to reconsider, whatever the proper move is related to this item. I note that that item was approved on a six-to-one vote with trustee Whit casting a negative vote. So essentially, you had your say at the last meeting in terms of being opposed to this. And I think it's frankly improper for you to pull this out again and oppose it when you're already on record as having done that, and the rest of us agreed to move forward with this contract.
In fact, yeah, now that I think about it, Robert's rules, only, only someone on the affirmative can move to reconsider. You can't be on the negative side. I just now remembered that. That's a valid point. So unless I have a motion from someone else to reconsider, we can't do it.
What's the reason again?
You can only, Robert's rules say you can only move a motion to consider if you are on the winning side. It prevents the losing side from holding things up.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, deference to trustee Whit, I'm happy to be, make the motion to reconsider.
And then you would need another second.
You would need to second it.
She can't second it.
I can't second it.
She's, she can't be involved in the motion at all.
She can't second?
No. Hearing no seconds, I guess we're not doing it. Okay. A lesson in Robert's rules. All right, thank you. All right.
So just to clarify, we're moving forward based on the vote?
Well, yeah, we need a motion and a second to approve 5.1, the minutes. Yeah, there's the vote. I have a motion from trustee Jay, a second from trustee Wright. Is that still you wishing to speak? Okay, all right. So we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Have a six trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote, and a no vote. Okay, so next we have 5.4, or three, trustee Lang. Okay, so next we have 5.4, or three, trustee Lang.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, first, I would like to thank Vice Chancellor Amber Gable. Uh, she provided me with, uh, substantial information about this item. And frankly, I wanted to basically make certain that I had shared those findings with the other trustees, uh, because I was a little confused. I, I saw basically a, a, what looked like just a subcontract for the cameras as part of an overall, um, budget, uh, project budget of 4.2 million. And I guess the camera part of that is complete, which is why we're moving forward to, uh, approve that. However, I've, based on the information that trustee, that Vice Chancellor, uh, Gable provided to me, there are a number of other aspects to this, uh, contract, including things like panic buttons and access control upgrades and another phase to this contract, so that we believe that the real contract budget for this is going to be something like 6.7 million dollars, um, rather than the 4.2 million dollars here. And so that's really kind of the source of my, uh, angst about this, uh, is the fact that we're approving this item and this perfectly, may, may, may well be perfectly within the budget that we had anticipated for the cameras, but it looks like the project itself has expanded completely, uh, really unbeknownst to all of us. So, um, that, that's a concern to me.
Yeah, so when IVC first, um, went down the path to include the electronic door access and the security cameras for their campus, they put in a kick and bark request, um, during this past fiscal year for 4.2 million dollars. As they were going through the project, um, a couple of things occurred. Um, originally, they were planning on doing wireless, um, for the access controls. Um, they found that the wireless could be unpredictable, and so a better, uh, way to install the access controls would be to hardwire the access controls at each door. And so by doing that, that's going to add a significant amount more cost to it, but it's going to be a more reliable system.
And if you recall, that came to light when trustee Prendergast had lunch with a member of the faculty at ATEP. And we went back in and looked at all of the issues associated with the door locks. And so it was after that that they realized that, that they needed to go back and hardwire it. So that was one of the, at least as I recall.
It was one of the issues. I think the other, the other thing is, um, anytime you are replacing doors, um, you need to go through DSA because that's an accessibility issue. So when they took the plans to DSA, DSA identified several doors and areas um, that require a four, a full door replacement um, because of the windows within the doors weren't at the appropriate, um, ADA guideline height or width. And so they're going to have to replace the doors. So kind of based upon that, um, that is why they're going to be doing another kick and bark request this upcoming fiscal year is so that they can fully incorporate both the hardwiring as well as all the accessibility issues that they're required to replace for all the doors on both IVC and, um, any work that needs to be done at ATEP as well.
All of that, but is it common, typically what we would do is we would identify a certain project. And then when that project was complete, we would approve the contract. In this case, what we're really doing is, is, and I don't know, maybe this is common and we do this for all our projects, but we're breaking it down by, uh, very finite components. And we're saying we're going to, uh, approve that portion of the contract, um, only and do that in a piecemeal fashion until we get to the 6.7 million and we finally have approved everything. It just seems odd to me, I guess.
Right, well, much of this we're doing under a CMAS, uh, agreement. So that's the California Multiple Award System, where it's already been bid, um, by a different entity and we are kind of piggybacking on that agreement. And we're doing it as a task order or a work order type thing based upon when they can get in and do the work, you know, a lot of it needs to be done after hours. Um, if it's destructive testing, we can't do it while classes are going on. So they're trying to do it on, you know, smaller phases for the amount of work that they can handle and know that they can get done. Once they finish that one and get it cleaned up, then they're wrapping it up and then they're starting the next phase. So that's kind of why you're seeing it in the phases that you're seeing it in.
Okay, but, but are, are we saying that that's fairly typical?
It can be. You know, I think since we had the CMAS agreement available to us, it allows us to do that. Um, you know, we did it differently for the Saddleback Campus. We did a design-build project for the Saddleback Campus so that it was all incorporated into one. Um, but when Saddleback did it, we didn't, there wasn't a CMAS agreement that was available. So that's why we're doing it this way with IVC.
Okay, I, I guess the, the other concern that I might have is if we're doing it, you know, piecemeal, what I would call a piecemeal fashion like this. If for some reason, we got to the end of the contract and some other part of the contract was dependent upon having done this part of the contract a certain way, and it wasn't done that way, uh, seems to me that could create some additional issues or problems. We've already let a certain contractor off the hook, if you will, by filing the notice of completion. And now we perhaps are looking at having to go back and, and take corrective action.
Right, with the CMAS contract, it is the same vendor that we're using, so I don't think we would have that issue. And, you know, since we're doing it as a task order, that's why we're doing the notice of completion because they've, they've finished those buildings and now we're moving on to the other buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, trustee Melchker.
I was just wondering, who is overseeing this project at IVC?
Um, it is Anna Petrosian primarily, who is one of their, um, construction, assistant construction managers on campus. Um, but Devit Kacatrian is the ultimate one that's responsible on campus for it.
And then do you oversee them to make sure that it's going?
We are working with them, yes.
Okay, okay. Is, is, uh, has Saddleback College finished, um, these projects?
So, Saddleback isn't quite done, but they're well under the way on doing theirs. Um, I think they just got approval for their final phases. I think they've completed, I'd have to look at my facilities report. They've definitely completed their first two phases and they're well underway into the other ones.
Well, I, I, I mean, I, I, I think it is unusual that we're, um, approving part of it now and part of it later, but I think, you know, these are kind of items that are necessary in these days to make sure that we have security for our staff and for our students. So, we almost have to move forward with this, not necessarily in this way, but we, it, it's important for us to, uh, have proper door security and so the doors can lock down and have a master lockdown for all the doors, you know, if there's any, um, bad actors coming onto our campus. So, so unfortunately, I think it's important, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further requests to speak, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion and a sec, actually, yeah, motion and a second for the item. A motion from trustee Jay, second from trustee Witt. Voting. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory vote, yes. All right. Next we have 5.4, trustee Wright.
The, the reason I, I pulled this, I just had a question. This is a wonderful event that the students are going to be going on. The Irvine Valley College Speech and Debate Team is a highly accomplished team that has earned an international reputation. And they're going to be sending six students and two faculty members. Uh, my question is, do we need the two faculty members? Would one be enough, or, or, or why, why two faculty members for, for just six students?
One moment, please.
Yes. Yeah. Please come to the podium.
Thank you, trustee Wright. Uh, I think just with having a legal background, anytime I'm going to bring students overseas internationally, I like to have at least one male and one female faculty member present, um, because we do travel, you know, with the students that want to be comfortable coming to whoever the advisor is, if an issue were to arise.
Okay, do you have, of the six, do you have both male and female?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you, I guess, why, do you have, uh, are the students sharing rooms at all? Because I noticed there were six rooms for eight people, so somebody's sharing.
And, and I wish, uh, unfortunately, the rooms are very tiny overseas and they will not allow more than two people to a room. So as much as I would love to have, uh, more people staying in a room, it will be two per room.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any, I, I think we're talking about this as a potential, uh, board policy review in the future. Because I know I've, I've done field trips and sometimes the organization that you're traveling has a required ratio of student to staff. Um, is there anything like that on this trip, or is it just?
There's no required ratio from the organization. However, I would love some guidance here, if, if there ever was a board policy for that. I'd be much appreciative.
All right. Thank, uh, that's a very good point about the male and female, I don't think that was made clear, but thank you. Um, trustee Melchker.
I, I just happened to notice when I read this agenda item that my son, when he was a student at Saddleback College, went to the same area in Japan for a study abroad program and, and really enjoyed the, the, uh, the opportunity to, to have the opportunity to study abroad. So, um, these are great opportunities we provide for our students, so I, I, I think it's wonderful, thanks.
All right, uh, with that, I have a motion from trustee Lang, a second from trustee Wright to approve the item. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next we have, uh, trustee Wright pulled 5.6.
There's 5.5.
Oh, I wrote six, five, okay, sorry.
Some, who pulled?
You pulled 5.4 and 5.
I, I pulled. Some, somebody did 5, 5.5, I don't remember who did it.
I thought, I wrote down you had pulled two items.
Yeah, just four and six.
Right, I just said 5.6, trustee Wright.
Okay. It's just a correction, uh, in looking at, uh, for Saddleback College, uh, they have someone on, uh, January 24th, 2019, giving a presentation. I think it should be 2020, that's all.
Good catch.
Okay, so with that correction, I have a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Jay to approve the item. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Have a six trustee yes vote, a trustee abstention, and a student advisory yes vote. Okay, with 5.15, trustee Jamal.
Yes, so this is under the contract ratification section, and I had a question about are the search consultants for the IVC president's position? I see that the district administration is recommending PPL, a group that this board is familiar with. They worked with us on the chancellor's search, uh, a couple of years ago. Um, I'm curious, from the district's perspective, why they think in this instance PPL is our best contractor to manage this very important search process?
If I can, I'd like to defer to have, um, academic senate president June McLaughlin, who was on that committee, speak as well.
Um, thank you. Uh, there were only three submitted proposals, so we reviewed all three. And among those three, this was, their PPL's proposal was, um, addressed all the needs appropriately with, had a, a very diverse group that would be working with us and also was the right price point.
Yeah, I think, I think our concern is, is that we were not happy with PPL and the chancellor's search and we wound up going with a different firm. I, neither of us can remember who it was, but we were not impressed by what was delivered by that group.
Can I ask, may I ask a question?
Yes, sure.
You, did you fire them and go, you used them, but?
We used them the first round and then wound up having to go to a second round and. I, yeah, I, we, no, we, they were never terminated. Um, and they, they, I think they came before the board here and, I mean, if you feel like they're a good fit, I just, they, they, I think it's in our experience and we were involved in that before. I, I don't know who's tending to them, but they, they need to be managed and directed. Um, and they.
That's what it was, yeah, we didn't fire them, but we, we wound up having to kind of tell them.
See, I think everyone knows who. I think there's a common knowledge of the pipeline, um, that might be out there. And the way the job description reads, it's really tilted towards certain types of candidates and excludes a lot of others. So, are they just, in terms of what kind of work you want them to do very specifically, they're just going to need to be directed. Um, and make sure that, um, that they're not just milling the same names that they're milling with 35 other clients.
Yeah, maybe some of the other trustees can chime in as to what they remember, but.
Is that?
Yeah.
May I add one thing? We will work with human resources to make sure that they're managed. I will add that there's an individual with PPL that does extraordinary reference check processing. And, um, that has been my experience on the reference check piece. So we'll certainly work with HR to manage the upfront pieces, the recruitment pieces.
That was the big part.
The candidate folks, uh, that might be coming. Uh, and, but I will tell you that we will certainly, um, see a, a really extensive thorough reference check process vetting through PPL because that has been my experience with PPL.
And I would add that the two people whose name were, names were on the proposal, I don't know who your, your people were from PPL who are working with you, but they're relatively recent retirees. So, uh, I, I think some of the leadership from PPL has moved on. And so they may be different individuals than the ones you worked with, I'm not sure.
Yeah, just, I know Terry wants to speak, just, what you said I think is important, Cindy, is, is that, you know, you manage the role they play and be very specific about the kinds of roles you want them to play and versus what the district's doing. And I think that's, you know, that's key.
Uh, yeah, I think we're, we're not, uh, asking to change it, it was just kind of a, a word of wisdom and caution from our experience.
Thank you.
Trustee Witt, write it out.
Um, may I ask the board, did we not ask, uh, two groups or three groups to come and present to us here in open session?
We did.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had them come here and.
We chose PPL based on their presentation.
Right.
They, they, very good presentation, but then
Execution.
The, the execution of it, the, the search part, the outreach part, like when we found out, like, trustee Jamal had gone on like a basic site where you would expect to see the job posted, and it wasn't posted. And it was like, why didn't you use that site? It's like national and it was just, there were concerns. So we basically had to direct them, this is what we want you to do for the second round, so that we're not getting also-rans from just within a certain area. And it was, it was disconcerting, but we got through it. And obviously, we got a chancellor out of it and, and it worked ultimately, but it took more work on our part than we expected that we would have to do as a board, if that makes sense. And so, words of wisdom.
Can, can I just add one thing? June, did, were you, um, were you? How should I say this? Were there two groups that were close, that you would take this one or this one? And it had to do with money, or was there a definite separation from the three that you interviewed? And it had to do with money or was there a definite separation from the three that you interviewed?
They were by far, they had by far the most experience in California with California community colleges.
Okay.
It wasn't just the price and, and after assessing for all the requirements, their, the cover letter, the presentation, addressing, we, we had asked them to address diversity and equity, everything that they wrote. They were by far.
Great.
On, on all those levels, superior.
Yeah, one, one did not submit a very thorough and professional document, in our opinion. And the other one had a very exorbitant price that was not worth what we're asking the search firm to do. It was almost three times what would be.
Thank you for all those efforts. Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, we, and I already said it once, you know, they were never terminated. I mean, so just to make, and I already said that, but just to be clear, we never, we never terminated the contract. They fulfilled, they, they completed the, the contract. And not to beat a dead horse, but really the issue was that if, make sure that they're doing things that we, we can't do. So I think with the search that hired Chancellor Burke, we didn't use a search firm. I think we used someone for the outreach side. I think we used them for the, maybe for the background check side, but we're the district services, you were there Cindy, we, you were, your district service was in charge of the promotion and marketing part of the, the vacancy, right?
Correct, and we felt since Irvine Valley College has not had the opportunity to hire a president in almost eighteen years that we should offer Irvine Valley College every resource available in this presidential search process. And that's why the chancellor and the college wanted a search firm associated with the search.
Maybe did.
All right, I, I think that it was just, again, more informational than critical. All right, Trustee Whit, write it out. Yeah, but you're, you're on a request to speak. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have a motion and a second. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. That is all of the fives. Moving on to.
Mr., Mr. President.
Yes.
It's a quick point of order.
Okay.
Regarding our previous discussions of whether the trustee Whit's motion was in order, I don't know whether it was in order, but I, I do know after some reading here that it may have not been the proper motion anyway to reconsider the motion. Proper motion may have been to rescind and to amend something previously adopted. So we just want to note that.
Yeah.
That, that.
But it still has to be from the prevailing side, right?
I haven't found that yet in here, but maybe that's something we could, at least just on the procedural part, ask the chancellor just to report on what would be the process generally to rescind, reconsider, or amend something previously adopted. I'm seeing language in here that trustee Whit could have offered something that would have amended part of it, but not all of it, instead of a, a complete rescission. So that's my point of order.
Remove to rescind, amend, something previously adopted. Yeah, okay, we'll look into that. Okay, with that. Yeah.
Yeah, there, there was a, there was an issue regarding notice, prior notification.
Yeah, and a two-thirds vote.
Yeah. Okay. Six point one, Irvine Valley College District Access Energy Services Provider Agreement. Do I have a motion and a second? I have a motion from trustee Jamal, second from trustee Jay. Do I have any requests to speak? Seeing none, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next is six point two, Saddleback College I T D, IDF Room E-Power Project. A motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Wright. Seeing no requests to speak, vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, a student advisory yes vote. Six point three, Saddleback College Public Relations Advertising Consultant Services for Orange County Regional Strong Workforce Program. A motion from trustee Wright, second from trustee Jay, request to speak from trustee Lang.
Yes, just very quickly and again, I will thank Vice Chancellor Gable for all of the information. I had a number of different questions regarding this item as well in terms of, you know, deliverables, how we use the information. And I think that would actually be good information for the rest of the board to probably hear. And, you know, in terms of the, the value that we have received from this project and this report. At least I found, I found it to be very interesting anyways and I'd love to hear maybe for you to make a few remarks about that. Perhaps President Stern may, may wish to chime in as well.
Yes, I can't take all the credit for the responses. I did work with President Stern on this as well as his team. So do you want us to just?
Just maybe kind of Reader's Digest version of, of the benefits that we have received or derived from participating in this project.
Okay, so some of the benefits that we've received, I'll, I'll kind of start and President Stern, if you want to kick in, you may, or jump in, not kick in, don't kick me please. Anyways, you, with the strong workforce funds and working with interact communications, we have been able to participate in economic impact reports, which we are utilizing for each of the colleges as well as the district in our marketing efforts. You may see that, I know I've seen it on our website recently. And it is a way that we can report out to the community the benefits that the college and the district are providing the community. We also received a, what they call an intake survey or a secret shopper type of survey, which provided us with the strengths and weaknesses of the college from a potential student that was interested in registering for classes. Based upon the information that Saddleback College received on that, it helped identify some weaknesses in our website, translation services for primary Spanish-speaking students, which we are now fixing with the strong workforce funds. And it also identified some customer service challenges in phone inquiries that they received and they are working to correct that. I would say those are probably the two big Reader's Digest aspects of that. There's some more things, I can go into more detail if you want, but those are the big ones.
That, that's great. I mean, I looked at this thing and I said, you know, this is a lot of soft costs that, you know, I'm not certain that we are getting the appropriate benefit for the amount of dollars that we're spending, even though we are participating in this thing through a consortium. But you convinced me of the error of my ways, I guess, and, you know, I just wanted to, the others to hear that as well.
Seeing no further requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Moving on to six point four, Saddleback College Stadium and Site Improvement Project, Material Testing and Inspection Services. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion from trustee Jay, second from trustee Lang. No requests to speak, really? There we go, Trustee Wright. Like, really? We're not going to get off that easy.
My, my question is, are we, why are we having so many amendments? I mean, is it the contractor? Because I, I drive by there every once in a while and I don't see very much progress.
So, yes, we're having amendments due to the contractor and the way that the contract is, is going. This particular change order that's in front of you is for the inspection services.
Okay.
And the inspectors, in accordance with our DSA guidelines, our inspectors have to test the steel where it's fabricated. This particular vendor that the contractor used their subcontract, they were manufacturing the steel in three different states. And so we had to observe the manufacturing of that steel in three different states. And there were numbers and numbers of days, you know. So originally, we thought it would be around a hundred and fifty-five days. It's up to four hundred and twenty-nine days. So the extended time that it's taking has expanded everything.
Are we still on track to have it done by July?
That is what is on the current and the latest schedule is that it will be July.
Now, are we going to get, are we going to get some money back from the contractor for all this delay?
We will have to be in negotiations with the contractor at the end of it. We are tracking every single day that it's past the due date and we are calculating the daily rate for our liquidity damages. We are also tracking all the costs that are directly tied to the project. And so we will be under discussion with the contractor on all of that.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Jamal.
I guess related questions. Your, your report to us says that additional testing services required due to contractor changes. What do you mean by contractor changes?
Originally, the design that was submitted by the architect, and remember this is a design build, so the architect is underneath the contractor. The design was not approved by DSA and so they had to change the design. And then when they delivered the steel, the steel was not to the appropriate length that it should have been. And so they were doing a field design change that then had to go to DSA for submission to approve the revised plan that had already been approved in order to accommodate the fact that the steel was not the length that it originally was in the plans.
So is this what, then, in the, I mean, is that, when you say here additional work scope requiring inspection, inspection twice, requiring inspection, inspection required at, at additional fabrication shops located in various states and contractor delay, is that?
All three of those things. Those are three separate things.
Okay, and a portion of these costs, to Jim's point, will be pursued in the form of a back charge?
Correct.
But we don't know how much.
Correct. Well, we, we're tracking the costs and we will pursue it. Whether or not we are successful in receiving everything is another story. But we will be pursuing everything that is owed to us by our contract.
Okay, and then lastly, my favorite subject, weather impacts, it's mentioned again in here. What, what, what weather impacts?
Well, the rain delays that, that occurred probably months ago on this are in there and, you know, so it, so when they're inspecting, they're inspecting the steel, they're inspecting the rebar, you know, they're inspecting everything. And so this contract has been the perfect storm, for lack of a better word, with several things delaying it. And so we are trying to work through everything. As I've said before, this is not the, the best contract. It's not going smoothly at all, as you guys know. And so we are continuing to try to work through it and get it done as quickly as we can.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So you mentioned design build. When we were presented, it's telling that Brandy's not here. We were presented option lease, lease-back, design build. And through both those presentations, the idea was it would diminish the number of change orders and increases in costs. And just curious, we're not really experiencing what we were sold. Is that a flaw in the design-build contract system that we originally were under the understanding? Or what, what's happening here? Because again, I, I keep thinking, what happened to this wasn't going to happen anymore and then it keeps happening.
I don't know that I could pin the cause of this project on the design-build process. You know, we could be going through the same thing if it was lease, lease-back or design bid build. You know, part of the problem early on is we had a significant change order or changeover in end-users between the original design and what was DSA-approved and once it started construction and things were added and things were changed. So anytime you have that, that causes change orders to a project because now you have a new look. And, you know, many of the things that were changed, you know, probably should have been changed and I think they are going to add value to the project at the end of it. You know, some of the issues really, the bleachers has been the crucial piece and the subcontractor that they are using, you know, had delays in the design. They're trying to say that DSA forced them to change the design. You know, so that is really a contention point that we are fighting with them on because they're trying to say that it's our fault that there was a delay of DSA. We're saying that our contract says that, no, you needed to build it to DSA standards all along. So that's just part of the conversation that's going on. You know, unfortunately, the firm is a very reputable firm. I just don't know that we've had the best personnel of theirs on this project from the very beginning and which is, and they've had a lot of changeover on their end as well. So that's kind of why I said it's been.
A perfect storm.
A perfect storm.
And, and I think regardless of the methodology, whether it's lease, lease-back or design build or design bid build, there's always going to be differing site conditions and those are always going to impact. Because you don't know until you get into some of the soil and so forth what is really there. And that can also have impact.
Just waiting for us to come across the Native American burial ground.
We already did.
Yeah.
We already did and we had to hire an observer.
Yes.
That was a few months ago. I think we're past that.
Trustee Whit, write it out.
I just wanted to say, Vice Chancellor, you've been on the spot so many times because I know that I've also felt why, why, why. And trying, what you just said tonight, trying to work through everything, everything is a lot. And in the least amount of time, it's an overwhelming amount of time that we faced. But as long as everything is safe and we're proud of it at the end, I'll be happy, but it sure took a lot. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next, we have six point five, dual enrollment agreement with capo unified. Motion from trustee Wright, second from trustee Lang. Seeing, oh, trustee Milchker.
I noticed that it looked like all the high schools were listed under the proposal and yet there were only three courses listed and it's starting January to twenty twenty. So I just wondered, what is the scope of the projects you're, you're, you're offering in the dual enrollment? Do you know now? I know this is for Cap Strano and I probably want the same question for Saddleback, which is the next agenda item.
I'm going to ask Vice President.
Just in general, okay?
Come out to address this. So the question was, did you hear the question? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
They're all at the same high school.
Yeah, that's why I was, yeah.
Good evening, trustees. To answer your question.
To answer your question, we actually are working on some early college programming, but that won't be until next year. So what you see in the board packet is for our spring semester. And it's the Counseling 100 class and some additional courses that we've been offering at the high school already. And the Counseling 100 is part of our Promise program.
Okay, so this is, are these dual enrollment classes? So these students would be getting college credit as well as?
Correct.
High school credit?
Correct. What we've had. It's a beginning.
It's a beginning. Okay, great, thank you.
Seeing no further requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.6, same thing, but with Saddleback unified. Seeing no requests to speak, we have a motion from trustee Jay, a second from trustee Jamal. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.7, district-wide standards professional services agreement. Motion from trustee Wright, a second from, second from trustee Jamal, and a request to speak from trustee Jamal.
So I had an exchange earlier today with the district on this. Just, I'm always concerned when we're awarding any money, and in this case, half a million dollars, when we receive no bids. So as a result of our public RFP, so can you talk about why you think we got no bids and why you think we ended up, the process has been fair and we're in the right place?
There's three bids.
I don't think we received any.
So originally, when we first did the RFP, we received one bid.
Okay.
From the proposal, and we deemed that non-responsive because it did not meet the scope. And the proposer did not exhibit that they had experience in doing the project.
So we received one bid, but they were disqualified. So in essence, we didn't get any bids.
Right, and so then what we did is we reached out to four additional firms that were on our pre-approved lists and solicited bids from them. We received three bids from the four firms that we reached out to. And that is what you see in the board agenda item, is the summary of those three bids that we received. The dollar amounts varied significantly. So we called in the lowest responsive bidder at that time, which is Perkins Eastmendorty, and made sure that they understood the depth or the breadth and the scope of the RFP and what we were asking. They assured us that they did. And so that's why we are recommending that we award the contract to Perkins Eastmendorty for the $499,690. I will say that it is a hardening market for anything construction-related. And to get an architectural firm to bid on this was very difficult because they are being inundated with design projects. And they would rather design a building than create Word documents that encompass, you know, 10 binders that's gonna be this tall, of very detailed specifications, which is what we're asking them for. So it's not work that they really like to do. It's very time-consuming, it's very tedious, and it doesn't have the wow factor when you're done because you don't see a beautiful building. All you see are a bunch of binders that you keep on your shelf and that you include in all of your RFPs moving forward.
I wish Blake was here. It sounds like we could bolster our agricultural, architectural services program here. We need a bigger pipeline of firms out there.
Yeah, I think it's with all of the, all of the bond projects that are out there, both K-12 and community colleges, you know, as well as the construction industry is booming. It's just, it's a very hard market right now.
I think you ended up in the right spot. I was just, my concern was, we did an RFP, get one bid, they were disqualified. So in essence, we got no bids, and then we had to do some outreach ourselves. So, but I understand, tight market. Thanks.
Okay, trustee Lang.
I think my question was, is I couldn't tell from this item, well, you've described it now a little bit, but exactly what they were doing for us. It didn't seem like that was described in any of the exhibits that were attached. And so I just had a difficult time getting my arms around exactly what was involved with this thing.
Right, so what they're doing is they're creating all of the specifications for what goes into a building. So it goes, you know, as much detail into what types of HVAC systems that we want to utilize, as well as our door control systems, what types of carpet, what types of molding, our plumbing systems, our infrastructure-related technology. So it's all of those details that go into designing the building. And that way, by creating these standards, it'll help streamline what we need down the road and create efficiencies. So we only have one set of things, and we can buy one type of, you know, cleaner that we're using for everything, and one type of, you know, technology-related items. We only have one type of door lock, those types of things. So we're not having to service and maintain various systems in our buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that, we'll go and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.8, agreement for comprehensive construction management services for district-wide capital construction projects. And a motion from trustee Jay, second from trustee Wright. Any requests to speak? Trustee Jamal.
All right, I have real, this one was difficult for me. I know Chancellor had an explanation for it. It seems to me this is a brand-new direction for the district, that we're gonna hire a management service, construction management services consultant, and then lock on, who would be available presumably on all projects in lieu of hiring construction management services for, on a project-by-project basis, which I understand is our current practice. Is that correct?
Correct.
So my, one of my concerns is a couple of things. One, the RFP was issued in September. I think firms were interviewed in November. Not clear on that timeline. And then we are proposing to lock ourselves into a five-year, $9 million agreement. What is our track record working with this entity that would justify providing them a $9 million contract?
So we have worked with them on several projects throughout the campus. They are currently the construction management firm on the access control project at Saddleback College. They have been providing very good services for us. You know, it was a committee of staff that evaluated the proposals, they did the interviews. They actually, they narrowed it down to three firms, and they interviewed all three firms. Some of the folks that were sent out were not acceptable, and so we asked them to go back and send us different individuals. We then interviewed those individuals, you know, interviewed the firm a second time with different individuals to make sure that we felt that they were experienced, understood how community colleges work, understood how to work with various constituent groups and meet our needs. And so I think the team that Bernard's has proposed is a team that we are satisfied with, that we think that we will get the best services from. You know, I think also by doing this, one, we're projecting to save money, two, it'll create some consistency as well as efficiencies. Because each time we hire a new CM firm, we have to teach them, what do our general conditions say? So they have to learn our contract language, they have to learn our way of doing things, they have to learn what system we use to track all of our documents and how to document all that. So by having one firm, we're gonna have that consistency and continuity to where they're gonna know our system, and they will be able to help us increase the amount of construction projects that we have underway. So as you see within the proposal, we have 13 different projects that we are either in design on right now or will be in design very soon. So it's a lot of activity going on. Having them onboard now will give us the opportunity for them to be involved at the front end on the design services. So they're looking at it from a construction standpoint of, you know, they're looking at the plans and they're looking at the drawings. So it gives us additional eyes on the constructibility of the plans that are being made to see if.
I guess, Anne Marie, my concern is, you know, locking ourselves, this is an entirely new direction for the district, and I think what you explained sounds rational. But why are we locking ourselves into a five-year contract in a brand-new direction? Why don't we see how it goes for a year? And if it, why don't we have a renewal trigger if things are going well after one year? Why do we want to lock ourselves into a five-year contract here?
So we do have an out clause if it's not working. I think one of the things, in order to get the best team possible, we kind of needed to go out for the five years. You know, a lot of the firms, again, it's the hardening market, so it's hard to find good construction managers, just as it is hard to find good architects and good IORs. And for them to know that, okay, we're going into this on a five-year period, we're gonna give you the best of our best because we know it's a long-term contract. You know, it is something that we can terminate for convenience within 30 days. So if it's not working, we can terminate. So I think we just felt that we would get the best rates with the best folks by going out for the five-year period.
How urgent is it that we approve it now? I mean, is this like tonight?
Well, we have, so with the access control project, that contract is terminating. And we were not, we don't have it slated to renew since we are recommending for Bernard's to come on. So we were planning on having him come onboard as soon as, you know, Friday with the team to get him up and running on the various projects that we have. But if the board's not comfortable awarding the contract, then it'll wait.
Maybe I'm the only one. Thank you.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, I had similar issues, just as trustee Jamal has mentioned, and I know I fired off a bunch of questions that Vice Chancellor Gable about it. And she was able to answer that, those to my reasonable satisfaction. I think one of the other concerns that wasn't brought up was, I think that of critical importance will be district oversight on these, on them and on these projects. And obviously, I was concerned with, you know, Brandy Delena, you know, moving on. And I think you may want to speak to that in terms of what the plans are and how you are contemplating redesigning that position, perhaps to make it more effective for the district. I think that's important. And there are a considerable number of projects, obviously, that are currently underway or will be forthcoming, which were listed out for me and persuaded me that there is, I think, some urgency.
So you just reminded me, that's all right, friendly interaction here. That was one of the questions I had, I forgot to ask, was, this is a new direction for the district. Brandy Delena is retiring. I didn't see anything in here talking about how that is gonna work.
And I would invite Vice Chancellor Gable to speak to that.
Right, so we currently have three construction managers that are our employees that report directly to Brandy Delena. What will happen is with this firm, they will be augmenting and working with our construction managers. And our title is construction manager, but I really see them as project managers. So we are creating three teams, so six people, with this contract that will be assigned to our three construction managers that will be working on all of our projects. Brandy oversees all of that, and she is also in that position, is the one that works with the contractors. So anytime there is a dispute within, you know, costing or change orders or anything, first it runs through the construction managers, and then kind of the second level, it goes through Brandy's position. You know, the other project that we have coming up, we are starting on the ATAS project at Saddleback College. So they are putting up construction fencing this week to start on the tennis courts, and we need a construction manager for that one as well. So there's a little bit more urgency than what I'd said. We would have two projects that we need somebody on here right away. So it's, it's a different way than what we have been doing because we'll have them onboard, you know, on a daily basis. But the services we have always utilized, and they have always supplemented what we're currently doing. We've just gone out and hired a different firm for every single project that we have. This way, we'll have one firm that's working on all of our projects, and we'll have that overlap and crossing. So if we have somebody get sick, we can pull from this one. You know, the idea is that they will pull in people as needed for what we need to get done.
But speak to the replacement for Brandy or the redesign of that position? I don't think you really mentioned that.
Right, so we're still working through that. We haven't finalized that. You know, I think there are some things that are in the job description that need to be updated to reflect what's currently happening. But I think it's too early to give you the specifics since Dr. Burke and I really haven't finalized on that. But we are planning on doing some reorganization or, and at least at a minimum, revising the job description.
But you'd still see the project managers reporting to that individual?
Yes.
Expanding their responsibilities above and beyond perhaps what was involved before?
Potentially, yes.
So I, maybe I'm, I would recommend you, I would have hoped you, someone would have come to us just a little bit earlier on this with your, how you were thinking about redesigning the whole system here. I mean, because one of the main things we do through Basic Aid is approve construction projects. And so that's a big deal to what we do here. I mean, I, I wouldn't, I would have liked to seen a better answer to, maybe trustee Lang felt it was good enough. I don't think you're quite there yet in terms of how the replacement's gonna fit into this new process. I would have liked to see you come back next session with a more comprehensive plan of how this is gonna work. It's a big chunk of money. I understand, it makes sense to do something in the aggregate instead of on a project-by-project basis. But, I mean, I just wish you had come to us a little earlier. Thanks.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
I would like to say that one of my biggest problems is the five years. Is that we're contracting them for five years. And I'm sure that if we contracted them for two, three years, they would still continue working for us after that. I don't want to come back next month and say, I thought about this some more, and I'm really torn by this. I am, I'm really concerned about this, about five years, right out, right out the door. Can you change that, Vice President?
Well, remember, there is a termination for convenience on 30 days' notice. That's part of the contract.
I understand that, Chancellor, but I'm not gonna figure that out in 30 days, I don't think. I just don't.
No, we mean, we can, we can terminate the, even if you approve it for five years, on 30 days' notice, we can terminate the contract.
Anytime within the five years.
Anytime within the five years. We have an out.
Oh.
We are not committed to five years.
We're not committed to five years. 30-day notice.
We're offering five years to get them to agree to it.
Yeah, that's on page 17, Article 8, under termination.
I apologize, I was looking up to see if I have. I apologize, I was looking up to see if I have a conflict of interest on this vote, but did you mention anything about cost savings on whether we did it the other way?
Yes, so we.
Did I miss that? Or did?
We did an analysis.
If you already said it, you don't have to do it again.
No.
Oh, okay.
We did an analysis based upon the CM services that we have contracted with over the last five years, and I will say it's less than 13 projects. And just using what we already contracted with over the last five years compared to this contract for five years, it's a $250,000 savings without taking into account, you know, five years ago, what the rates are today. You know, so we did no escalation on the old rates to try to get them to the current market rates of, you know, what you're having to pay for construction management services.
Not allowing for inflation.
Correct. We did not, so, you know, that's why I think the $250,000 is a minimum amount that we will be savings. And again, they will be working on every project that we have, and we have been increasing the number of projects. I don't think we've really ever had 13 projects going on at any given time like we do right now.
Okay. Seeing no further requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have six trustee yes vote, one trustee no, and a trustee advisory yes vote. With that, we will move on to 6.9, which is board policy revision, board elections, public safety camera system, and payroll period for personnel for review and study. Motion from trustee Wright, second from trustee J. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote.
Trustee President.
Yes.
I'd like to move that we extend the meeting until 9:30.
Oh, yay. I have a motion from trustee Lang, a second from trustee Milchker. I guess we'll wait for that to be set up. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a, no, the student doesn't want to stay. Trustee, student trustee yes vote. All right. Next, we have 6.10, board policy revisions that were presented at the last meeting. We have a motion from trustee Jamal, second from trustee Wright, a request to speak from trustee Jamal.
Yes, I'm on the board policy subcommittee, so I'm supporting this. But I had a question. If someone could please provide a concise explanation of what is required regarding administrator retreat rights? And what I mean is what is required by law to differ it from board policy? What is required by code with respect to administrator retreat rights?
So what, they basically are two categories. So if you were employed within a particular district and you had gone through, you had taught long enough or worked in counseling long enough to have achieved tenure, you retain that tenure in your district. So for example, I had tenure at Glendale Community College, but when I left Glendale Community College, I lost that tenure. So if I had gone into administration at Glendale College and then at some point decided to go back into the classroom, they would have to find a job for me because I have a property right to that job. Once I left Glendale College and went to the LA District or here to this district, I still retain my ability to teach, but I don't have tenure in either of those districts. So it's permissive. I could request to go back to the classroom. If you don't have a position available, you could say no. If there were issues with my performance, you could say no. So in a case where the individual does not have tenure within the district, giving them an administrative, I mean, giving them a faculty position is permissive on those kinds of factors. And if you do agree to let them retreat to the classroom, they retreat as a first-year probationary faculty member. So you go through the process again of evaluation for the four-year tenure process to ensure that, that you are successful in the classroom as you did when you may have first received tenure.
So as a, what you're saying is what's required by code, by statute, is that if you have tenure in a particular district, in this case, our district, and then you move into administrator role and somehow you're no longer an administrator, we must offer them a faculty position. So let me go to another situation because I think we've had this with administrator contracts, when the administrator has in the contract a provision that allows that person to retreat, but they had not been a tenured faculty. We have put that, I think, that language in the contract, so is that just elective on our part?
The language in the contract cites the education code that relates to retreat rights. So it's not an automatic ability to retreat. The retreat section cites the education code that we would then use as law to make that decision.
But if we, for example, if we hire the next president of Irvine Valley College, we're not required to put in that person's contract retreat rights, right?
So retreat rights go in if they are eligible by virtue of their degrees, qualified to teach, and that's vetted through the academic senate.
But that's not in statute.
That is not, no, but it is permissive.
Yeah.
You mean, it's allowable?
Yes.
When you say permissive.
It's allowable.
It's allowed, but it's not mandatory. So it's something that we could choose to do or choose not to have in the contract in that particular situation.
Well, the, retreat rights are in the education code, so someone would have them because they're, regardless, because they're part of the education code.
Whether, whether they're in the contract of employment or not, they would, they still have the, the permissive right to request it.
I don't understand what that means. So they, so if we, I'm trying to make, boil it down simple, I'm using a specific case. We hire a president of Irvine Valley College, and that person obviously doesn't have tenure here. They're not, so is there, I know you're saying it's permissive, but we don't, do we, must we have in that contract language that allows that individual to retreat to the faculty?
So, yes, they give them the opportunity. So let me use myself as an example. When I was hired at this district, I was asked whether or not I wanted retreat rights in my contract, because I have a personal stance that not everyone should be in the classroom. I elected not to have it in my contract, but I, that education code still would apply to me, even though it's not in my contract. So we typically, if someone wants it in their contract, we will put the education code language in the contract because it's, it's not extensive language and, you know, there's two years of satisfactory service and things that are in the education code. So we leave it up to the individual coming in as to whether or not they would ask for retreat rights in their contract.
We don't have to provide it.
Knowing that retreat rights correct is not an automatic.
Okay, you just answered my question. So we are not required, in the instance when an individual is not a current tenured faculty in the district, we're not mandated by code to offer them retreat rights, correct?
They still would have retreat rights via the education code.
You can't give up your rights of the law.
But they wouldn't be automatic. If you're tenured within the district, it's automatic. You can't lose your retreat rights. You automatically get retreat rights because you are tenured in this district. It's not automatic if you come from outside the district in.
Whether it's in your contract or not.
Whether it's in your contract.
Whether it's in your employment contract or not.
Hello?
No. Honestly, it didn't, but maybe others can help me clarify.
Trustee Witt, write out.
Yeah. Academic, I, I, I'll yield my time to the academic senate president.
Thank you. Having worked on two iterations of the, this particular policy, because it's permissive, I, when I was, we, this wasn't discussed this time, but it was a previous time we worked on it. The idea was that since somebody can ask for it, the district should have guidelines as to if they ask for it, since they are by law allowed to ask for it, we should have these guidelines in place. Now, your issue, does it have to be in the contract or not, has never been discussed because when I asked about it, we had a previous board administration who liked to put it in. It didn't have to be in the contract was what I was told, but I, don't ask me about the specifics of that because that's not my legal background at all, but it was asked and it said they could put it in if they wanted to. Now, the, the reason that this particular one is coming back, it does have an additional change to it from our previous board policy because now we're asking that if somebody is going to ask for retreat rights, that they have two years' successful teaching experience or counseling or library experience. That was not in the previous one. So we have had administrators who've never taught, who met the minimum quals, it was in their contract, and we had people who'd never taught before were immediately granted a tenure track, first-year position, which in, from my perspective, was, was not acceptable, but that was what the wording was before. So now we're putting additional, at least some criteria on it for them.
And I'm trying to avoid that situation happening again.
I can't talk about contracts. I just like the fact that we have two years of experience required at the community college level.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing, okay.
Can I just, can I just ask the question? Did any of these rules change or did this change? Because when I first came here, which is really a long time ago, a colleague of mine came with me and she brought her seniority here. And off the bat, she had it. So I, I'm just, I didn't know that this was in place, to be honest with you. I thought if you transfer, this is transfer now.
My understanding is a district could choose to accept someone's tenure in another district. I don't know of any districts that currently allow that, but I would think it would be permissible for a district to say, if someone had tenure in the Rancho Santiago district, that there could be a policy that would accept it. I haven't seen that. Usually, it's only tenured within the district.
Actually, this was from Rio Hondo. And I, I mean, it's a long time ago, it's 40-some years ago, but.
Yeah, this, this all came into play with AB 1725 around 1988.
Okay, well.
So if it was before 1988, 31 years ago, then the rules may have been different.
They were.
Okay.
Seeing no further requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Someone needs to vote. Thank you. We have six trustee yes vote, one abstention, and a student advisory yes vote. All right. 6.11, district initial proposal. At this point, we are now at this item regarding a public hearing on the district's initial proposal to the District School Employees Association. Before we hold the public hearing, Acting Vice Chancellor Kim Widdes will provide an introduction.
The board will conduct a public hearing to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on the district's initial proposal to CSEA. If the board has any questions throughout this public hearing process, I'm here to assist.
Does the board have any questions for staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? Seeing none, board item 6.11, the public hearing on the matter at hand is now open. Public comments are not to exceed two minutes. Seeing no one requesting to speak. Public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the board? Item 6.11 is concluded. Now we'll move on to 6.12, adoption of the district initial proposal to CSEA. I have a motion from trustee Milchker and a second from trustee Jamal. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Waiting for a vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. We are now at board agenda item 6.13, regarding a public hearing on the district's initial proposal to the District Police Officers Association. Before we hold the public hearing, Acting Vice Chancellor Kim Widdes will provide an introduction.
The board will conduct a public hearing to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on the district's initial proposal to POA. If the board has any questions throughout this public hearing process, I'm here to assist.
Does the board have any questions for staff to assist with the understanding of this matter? Seeing none. Board item 6.13, the public hearing on the matter at hand is now open. Public comments are not to exceed two minutes. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the board of trustees? 6.13 is concluded. We will now move on to 6.14, adoption of district initial proposal to the Police Officers Association. A motion from trustee Jamal and a second from trustee Wright. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next, we have 6.15, academic employee and classified administrator personnel actions. Before, before voting, I have readout, oh, there's only one this time, not 28. Position one, Acting Vice Chancellor Human Resources, employee name Kim Widdes, contract dates October 24, 2019 through June 30, 2020, range and step 27 and 3, annual salary 213480, monthly allowances transportation 625, telephone internet 100, cellphone 165. I have a motion from trustee Witt, right out, a second from trustee Wright, and a request to speak from trustee Jamal.
So I, I have a note to myself, trying to find the spot, regarding the.
Last page, it's page 10 of Exhibit C, I believe.
That's what I was trying to get to. So I'm on Exhibit A. There it is, the timeline, on the last page. We had, through Chancellor Burke, with the hiring of Dr. Stern, we instituted a practice to allow the board to interview finalist, finalist candidates for the positions of presidents of the colleges. And I thought it worked fairly well on the, under the last round. So I would, I, when I saw April, the target date of April 20, 2020, it said board discussion regarding finalist candidates. And what I would like to see in there is board interviews of candidate finalists.
So I would recommend that we put, from, you have the finalist interview week on the campus forums listed. So I would say from April 5th or 6th, whatever that date is, through the end of April is an opportunity for the board to conduct its interviews and that you move what is listed for April 20th to the May board meeting. Does that?
Sure.
Okay.
So we're amending the item, in a sense, the exhibit. Correct?
We would be amending the Exhibit C, page 10.
Okay. Somewhere between the April 1 through 3 finalist interview week and campus forums and the April 20th board meeting, we would do the interviews and then, and then move what's listed as April 20th to the May meeting. And then move what's listed as April twentieth to the May meeting.
So to our friends over there, the, the, the board has no role in the committee composition, the selection, the promotion. The, the preliminary interviews, as we did with Dr. Stern. We were able to interview the finalists that were forwarded, um. To, to the chancellor and we were able to interview them. Ultimately, it's chancellor's decision, um, at the end of the day. But, I mean, I thought it worked actually fairly well, um, and we got someone pretty good, so.
Um, we are very, we're working very hard to model, uh, everything we do after what Saddleback did. We really are for, uh, hiring, uh, Dr. Stern, so.
I'll, I'll be honest with you, the, 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 the system we used this time around, I think, worked really well. So, um, if we model our, the dis-surge after that one, I, I'm confident that it'll go well. Emery Gable handled it spectacularly, so thank you.
And that, and I think that's to his point, is we would like to do the same and that's missing. Perfect, all right. With that, uh, a motion from trustee Whitright L, just a second, no more further requests to speak. We'll go ahead and vote on the item. Have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Six point one six, faculty conversion to Canvas one, time stipends. Have a motion from trustee Jay, a second from. Second from trustee Whitright L. All right, uh, no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Have tr- six trustee yes vote, one trustee no, student advisory yes vote. Six point one seven, classified personnel actions, any changes?
No changes.
No changes. Motion for trustee Jamal, second from trustee Jay. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Somebody still needs to vote. There it is. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Uh, six point one eight, non-bargaining unit personnel actions, any changes?
No changes.
No changes. A motion for trustee Wright, second for trustee Jay. No requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Six, oh, there is no more six, seven reports.
Point of order.
Yes.
I just want to verify that the records do show that we did vote on item six nine. Cause I don't remember that, that was right around the time that we were doing the break and we did, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we voted on it and then you made the motion on the break. I, I went through the same thing in my head, did we vote on it? Yeah, we did. All right, seven one, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers. Seven two, list of board requested reports, status of board requested reports. Seven three, staff response to public comments. Seven four, facilities plan status report. Seven five, monthly financial status report. Seven six, OPEB trust fund report. Okay, moving on to Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Good evening, uh, I'll be brief because I want to go home and finish grading projects and finals. Um, want to make sure I invite you all to flex week on Tuesday the seventh at eight AM in the cafeteria. We'll be having the president's opens, open, president's opening breakfast, you're all invited. Unfortunately, we won't have the new vendors in place by then, but next fall will be awesome. And I turn, and please note, we've changed the order down here. That to show the collegial working relationship that Saddleback and IBC faculty have with each other. We decided that we should sit next to each other.
They usually have faculty association in the middle. CSEA used to do the same thing and then.
You could be the glue though. I once was.
No report.
Okay. Faculty Association.
No report tonight, no Christmas carol to sing tonight. But I want to wish you all happy holidays and I hope you have a, a restful break and look forward to working with all of you in the new year. Thank you.
Okay. Vice chancellor, technology and learning services.
After decades of service, Leo Lee is retiring from our infrastructure group and district information technology. So we wish Leo the best in retirement.
Thank you. Vice chancellor, human resources.
No report.
Vice chancellor, business services.
No report, just happy holidays.
Okay. Uh, IBC classified senate.
Yes, just wanted to wish everyone a wonderful holiday and winter break. We, on December twelfth, we met with our acting president. So thank you for, uh, meeting with us for the classified senate officers. Thank you to all of our classified for their participating and shared governance, um, this entire semester. Uh, we are planning for our spring twenty twenty meetings and activities. Uh, January tenth, um, we will be holding our general meeting with lunch from twelve to one thirty during the flex week at, in the PAC lobby. And we are getting ready for our third coaching session for caring campus, which is on January thirty-first.
Okay, Saddleback.
Good evening, trustees and chancellor Burke. Saddleback College Classified Senate, uh, ran our annual giving thanks to student veterans. Event between October twenty-eighth and November eighteenth. Uh, we collected over sixty ba- shopping bags full of food. Uh, eleven wood crates also were full of food. We had seventeen hundred and fourteen dollars in cash donations and another eleven hundred and fifty dollars in gift card donations. We presented our food and gift cards to forty different families, uh, ranging from one to nine people in each family. All families have received at least one bag of food and a twenty-five dollar gift card for a turkey. Uh, we also, um, received thirty Blaze Pizza coupons that were given to the veterans office. So that they could use them as needed. And our seventeen hundred and fourteen dollars in cash, uh, will go into an emergency fund through the foundation. So that if there's any veteran that has an emergency over the next few months, that money will be able to, or be available to them. Uh, I'd like to wish everybody happy holidays and a merry Christmas and a great winter break. Thank you.
CSEA.
My holiday gift to everyone is that I have no report.
All right, well then you're gonna love me. My holiday gift is a motion to reconsider. Item two point four, exhibit. F, approval of agenda format. We need to switch the listing of the academic senate and the classified senate in the order of. The agenda.
Really?
Yep. Do I have a second? I have a second. All right, so we're amending the agenda format to reflect the. Actuality of the structure. In no requests to speak. Nope, not until next year.
Check Merriam-Webster.
Yeah, Merriam-Webster's wrong, man, because it doesn't start at zero, it starts at one. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, next decade starts at eleven, anyway.
Tortured soul.
You want to vote? Somebody needs to vote. There we go, unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. With that, we are adjourned. Have a good evening and have a wonderful holidays, safe. Have, be safe, have fun, yes, you can do both.